Okay, folks, it looks like we have a quorum. I'd like to call the meeting to order and turn it over to our moderator, Mr. Morton.
Evening, everybody. Coming to the end of the session, we thought we'd cut it short, so we just put in a couple of dozen items here tonight to deal with. First of all, without objection, I'd like to accept the agenda and ask for a motion to move on to the second item, which is approval of the minutes of September 23rd. Can I have a motion?
I'm still moving.
Okay. Second, please. Corrections, additions? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Have aye, thank you. Opposed? I hear none. Abstentions? I hear none. There will be some, under announcements tonight, there will be some changes to the agenda. We have Chief of Police here tonight. He's calm, and so we'll move that item up top after the briefings on these different developments that are going on, on the different projects. So we'll move 1925 up, so give the chief an early shot here. And then we'll take it from there. We do have an item at the end, which we sent out after we heard from the finance director about purchasing some outstanding bonds and saving the town a lot of money. So we'll add that as a, what did we put that as? 19 dash item, 19 dash?
Twenty-seven.
Nineteen?
Eighteen.
Nineteen twenty-seven, I think it is. Anyway, if it changes, I'll let you know. It's a bookkeeping matter, but it saves the town $60,000 if we do it, so. All right, so without further ado, we'll do updates on town projects. For Planning and Zoning Department, Jeremy Ginsburg.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you were able to come out. We felt that this would be an appropriate time to bring you all up to speed about the various projects you've been hearing about over the past few years. We invited the Palmer family, representatives from Federal Realty, and David Genovese, who's here on behalf of the Corbin district. The Palmers emailed me back and said they could not make it tonight, but we do have not only their plans and approvals on the town website, the other plans and approvals for these projects as well. So if you want to look at any of the plans or approvals, studies, analyses, those are So we have two out of the three here tonight. I'm very excited about all of these. You've been hearing about, a lot about them for years, and they're going to be getting underway over the next few months, and these will be multi-year projects. So without further ado, Sarah Ford is here. She's the Development Director from Federal Realty.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Jeremy. I appreciate the invitation and opportunity to come introduce myself and present what we think is an exciting project. My name is Sarah Ford. I am a Development Director for Federal Realty. I joined Federal in May of this year specifically to pioneer this project through the development. It's a bit of a coming-home project for me. I spent the last 12 years working for Forest City and, most recently, Brookfield Properties in DC. Having been born and raised in Simsbury, it's exciting to finally work on a project in my home state. So for those of you who don't know, Federal Realty, we're a national publicly traded real estate investment trust founded in 1962 with projects across the country. We have 104 properties, which is made up of about 24 million square feet of GLA, with a focus on development, ownership, and management. Our, I would say, the backbone of the company while we do office and multifamily is really high-quality shopping centers and placemaking. So this project is one that's very much in our wheelhouse and one that we're very excited about. This is the site that everybody knows across the street from the Norotin Heights train station, bounded by West Avenue to the north, Heights Road to the south, Norotin Ave to our east, and Edgerton to the west. So this shows you what the site looks like today, and this is what it looks like upon redevelopment. In total, it will be 122 residential rental units. That's about 55% one-bed, 45% two-bed, and average square foot of 950 square feet. And then we, but we have a below-grade parking garage where I'm showing here, to be shared between this building and this building here. The R1 building and the R3 buildings are the two that will have the residential above it. It's three stories. First floor is ground floor retail, second and third floor are multifamily residential. So in that below-grade parking structure, it's approximately 210 parking spaces. That was important to us, to bifurcate the uses. Residential parking below grade saves all of the surface parking lot for our retail tenants and patrons. In total, there's about 500 parking spaces for the retailers. It's about 75,000 square feet of new retail. So going back to the existing site, in terms of what stays and what goes, near term, this building right here next to Citibank, 132 Heights Road, will be demolished, and there are two smaller structures up here, 169 and 171 Norotin Ave, that will also come down. Equinox stays, Chase Bank stays, Citibank stays, exactly as-is, which we're excited. It also creates a bit of a logistics challenge as we work through the construction schedule. That being said, you can see up here, Walgreens has shifted a little bit. Plan East, we're building a new Walgreens. This is parking that wraps up and on top of Walgreens, and then this parking wraps back behind Equinox. That's all open to the public for retail use. Ultimately, once we build the new Walgreens, they'll move into it, and we'll complete the demolition of the Stop &amp; Shop and Walgreens buildings. In terms of phasing, we're looking at this as three major phases. The first is what you see up here in green. Phase one is really the eastern third portion of the site. It's to get Walgreens open and operating, all of the surface parking on the eastern portion of the site, as well as a large stormwater detention system that we're installing in the eastern portion of the site, right around here. The intent of that is to largely remedy some of the flooding issues that have historically happened in Heights Road. So once that comes online prior to Walgreens relocating, that should drastically help improve that flooding situation in Heights Road. Once the Walgreens stormwater detention system is in, another piece of this puzzle is we're building a new ATM structure for Citibank, just east of their building, which I missed before, and you can see right here. So we'll be demolishing their existing ATM canopy once the new one is up and running, and that's all part of phase one. Phase two will be the R1 building, which is the northernmost residential building, which has approximately 30,000 square feet of ground floor retail with approximately 60 of the residential units, followed by phase three, which will be the R3 building, the southern of the two, which has a very similar program of approximately 30,000 square feet of ground floor retail and about 60 residential units. Of note, of the 122 residential units, 16 of them will be onsite affordable. In terms of where we are right now in the overall construction schedule, we're out to bid. We have 100% construction documents, so assuming pricing comes back where we need it to, we hope to be under construction in the next four to six weeks. The first thing you'll really see is the demolition of 132 Heights Road. Beyond that, we anticipate the completion of phase one, which is that Walgreens opening approximately Q2 2021, so about a year and a half from now. Phase two, the R1 building, would be done approximately Q1 2022, and the final phase, Q3 2022. So overall, it's about a 32-month construction duration, but once we have phase one up and running, at least that pain point is just left on the west side. So that's our schedule. These are a little bit hard to see. You can see the current condition on the bottom half, and then a rendering in the future. So here's Walgreens. This is the new Walgreens over here, and you can see ground floor retail, two-story structure above. This is a view looking at 132 Heights Road, so that's the building that will come down. And looking back into a new entry, this is the R3 building. Next to it is what we call the R4 building. It's a small, about 1,200-square-foot retail pavilion, which we anticipate to be some type of food and beverage operator, whether it's coffee or ice cream or satellite to this tenant, which we hope to be a sit-down restaurant. And lastly, this is the view of West Avenue. This shows what it looks like today, and this will be what it looks like in the future, where you'll really just see the two floors of residential. And that is it. So, so, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
While David's setting up, many of you know David has been working, over the past few years, acquiring various properties in the Corbin block. This is the block from the post office in downtown, north to the Corbin building, and then all the way further across from the movie theater, that whole area around the post office. He's also going to talk a little bit about properties across the street from that, which is the gas station and mathnasium and the building just to the south of that. Many of you know David and how he's been working on this, so he's here to tell you a little bit more about it.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I think this might be the only group I have not presented this project to in the town of Darien. So thanks for having me. As Jeremy said, it's been a long journey. We've been working on this project since, we started talking about it in 2005. We acquired the first properties in 2007, those being 10 Corbin Drive, 30 Corbin Drive, the post office, 33 Old Kings Highway South, which many of you probably recognize as the Darien Garden. Now I call that the Darien Farm. It's become quite a big operation. And then 17 Old Kings Highway South, which we developed in 2010 or so. But it has been a long journey. It took us about 12 years to acquire all of the properties, and it took us about three years to work through the various land use boards in the town. We started on a very different path with a different architect. We had a different idea. The world was changing very rapidly. The mall in Norwalk, which, to be candid, I never thought would actually get built, I perceived as a risk, but as a real estate person for 30 years, I really didn't believe that anyone would build a mall in this day and age. That started to proceed, and Whole Foods was bought by Amazon, and we started to hear more and more about the death of retail and the impact of the internet on retail. And I concluded that if I screwed up with one building, that would be a problem for me, but if I screwed up in the development of seven buildings in downtown Darien, that would be a problem for all of us. And so I did something that was probably the hardest thing I've ever done in my career. I literally threw the plans that we had paid a lot of money for into the garbage can and started again, thinking about kind of the new reality and taking into consideration a lot of the things that we had learned along the road. And the end result is the new project that I'll share with you tonight. So this is the presentation that we're sharing with retailers and restaurateurs and fitness concepts that we're talking with. You know, as, as we point out to them, we've acquired seven acres immediately adjacent to I-95. You know the block. And we're incorporating into the plan a lot of what we've learned over the last years. My partner Penny Glassmeyer, Bill Grove Street Plaza, owns the buildings on Brook Street where Kirby Girl is, and we helped open Kirby and Company. So we've worked with a lot of different local retailers and starting businesses and nurturing them over the years, and that's been our emphasis, really focusing on local retail, not necessarily like chain, national retail, because that's what we thought from the beginning people in Darien wanted. We've kind of kept that spirit in the project that we've been working on, as you can see from the tenants that we've worked with, and so we've been promoting this to people, but also incorporating things that we learned from experiments that we've done at Grove Street Plaza, like the Friday night concerts that some of you go to or have seen that we sponsor in the summer, and just the activity that we've seen in the, in the Grove Street Plaza, as the tenant mix there has changed from, you know, what was originally a jewelry store and the melting pot and a kid's clothing store to espresso neat, and now this incredible baker. If you haven't been to Flower Water Salt, I highly recommend you check it out. It's one of the greatest businesses that's opened in Darien. We're so excited about Rob Van Kuren, who actually grew up in Darien and came back to start that business. So we're finding this kind of movement among local people that are trying to start cool businesses and that make our downtown different and make it feel like a community. And so that's really our emphasis in the project. We've been talking to the farmers market about moving, you know, they're constantly getting shuffled from one parking lot to another. We've told them we'd make a home for them in our project. They're delighted to do that. They told us if we do what we say we're going to do, they'll give us a Saturday farmers' market, which we'd love to have, and we'll continue the concerts and the other fun things that we've been doing. These are the demographics that we highlight to the retailers. You, you know these things. We're ranked number one to number seven, depending upon what journal you look at in terms of places to live. We have incredible schools. This is a view of the interior of the project, looking toward the Bank of America building, basically showing the public plaza and the apartment buildings above the retail. This is looking toward Bank of America from Corbin Drive. This is a view of the new Corbin Drive, of the store that, stores that would be along Corbin Drive, kind of where the post office is today. This is a view of the interior of the project, this public space that'll be very pedestrian-friendly, where we'll have the right or the ability to close the street and literally on weekends have farmers' markets and concerts and outdoor dining, and people can walk around and feel safe they won't be at risk of getting hit by a car. And this is a view of the new Post Road, so taking out the backout parking and putting parking, parallel parking along the stores and the two-story, two stories of apartments above the one-story of retail. There'll be a total of 32 stores. That may change as we combine and adjust. Seven food concepts. That means anything from a full-service restaurant to a small coffee shop or a grab-and-go place like Green &amp; Tonic, some of our existing customers, 116 apartments and 82,000 feet of office space. So we're the only project that's actually building office space, and we think that's really important because Darien is so, downtown Darien, like Norotin Heights, is so proximate to the train, and a lot of people want office space within walking distance of the train. There's a premium being paid for that now, and we think that Darien would benefit, not only would the project benefit, but Darien would benefit because you get tax base without any impact on schools. And then those businesses, those employees support the restaurants and the retail that are in the, in the project. There's a total of over 800 parking spaces created by the project. That's the site from Exit 11 to 1020 Post Road and then back. And the idea is that phase one basically is from the gas station back, the three buildings along Corbin Drive. We're partnering with the owners of those buildings, and the idea is that those will be the phase one buildings. Those will be built first, hopefully beginning in the first quarter of next year. We got our last approval. I wish I didn't have to do this, but in, in, along the Post Road, we had to, after getting all of the town approvals, we had to go to the Department of Transportation and get special approval, kind of like what Whole Foods had to get when they were built. That process took a long time, and they threw a couple curveballs at us in May, asking us to widen the Post Road by six feet, which would have meant that we'd have to totally redesign the project. We went back to zoning with some adjustments, and then the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers tried to get us to pay a massive fee, remediation fee, in order to move a pipe that runs from the Post Road to Old Kings Highway South. Someone in the EPA thought that that pipe, because it's, it's open to the air, actually has ecological value, and it functions like a river. And they said that 100 years ago, up until about 100 years ago, there was a river that ran through Darien in the vicinity of that pipe, and I'd been hearing that Brook Street was called Brook Street because there used to be a brook there. I did not believe it. I now know that that is true, so I can share that for you, history buffs. But we were able to negotiate with the Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA over the last few months, and we got the final approval from them about six weeks ago. So now we're tying down all the loose ends, and this is basically the first-floor spaces, just to give you an idea. So our hope, to follow along with what Sarah was saying, is to build these buildings first. We want to deliver the retail as fast as we can. We may be working upstairs on the apartments, but the idea is to build those buildings first, put our fir, you know, a couple of the new tenants into that building, or those buildings, and then move our existing people like Barrett Bookstore, Morley, Helen Ainsen. We've created a home for, a temporary home for some and a permanent home for others of our existing customers. And then when we build phase two, this'll, this retail portion, to build the retail portion and open that, we think will take about 12 to 14 months, and then this phase will take about 18 months after that. The hope is that we relocate everybody that we have to relocate among the retailers to here and then move a couple over to here. For example, Barrett Bookstore. We want Barrett Bookstore to be kind of a centerpiece of the project. They're a great business. They're doing really well up and, or down in downtown now, and we think that by positioning them next to some of the restaurants and fitness concepts and other businesses that will be here, their business will get even stronger. What else can I share? I guess that's about it. But you would see, lastly, that we've actually signed a number of leases lately with a couple of great retailers like Shoes &amp; More, Morley, Barrett Bookstore, Move Downtown, and we just signed a lease that they're going to take occupancy in about a week, maybe less, with a kid's clothing store called Egg New York. And what's happening is, we're finding that, you know, the Darien community is so appreciated by the retailers and the restaurateurs that we're talking with, people want to get into these projects before they miss the opportunity. So some of them, like Shoes &amp; More, are coming now and committing with the understanding that they'll have to relocate once, maybe twice. And that, to me, in doing this for 30 years, is really pretty astounding, and I think a testament to the place and the special place and the community that is here, because moving a retail location once is a pain, moving twice or three times unfathomable, and, you know, they're doing it. So anyway, it's been a long journey, but we're really grateful to be ready to get going now. I'm so tired of being asked, "When are you going to start construction?" My daughter wrote an article in the newspaper, you might have seen it lately. Don't ask me where I'm going to college or where I'm applying to college. I feel like the same way about this project, but soon that will be over in a distant memory. It's been great. I have to give a shout-out also to Jeremy and the team and all the land use commissions. It was, you know, there was a lot of dialogue and a lot of debate over what was the right thing to do, and were the buildings too tall, or were they this, or were they that? And in the end, what I can say is that really, while it was painful, and my hair was not gray like Sarah's before this project began, you know, it got gray through the process, I'm totally convinced that we created a better project through all the back and forth and the collaboration, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want me to introduce Mike Scro? Or you want to introduce Mike?
Pear Tree Point, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Sure.
I don't have this in my lap. Do you want to put it on there?
Lori Bora, great.
Yes, right. I said she's, yeah. Go ahead.
It's my pleasure to, the next, which is not really related to the two developments, but Lori Bora, Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission, is here to talk a little bit about the Pear Tree Beach project. David Genovese is kind enough to set up the, not only good developer, but...
This is an extension of my duties. I didn't know this was coming.
There you go. Come on in. Thank you, Lori.
Lori, give me one second, just a second.
I don't need that while I'm doing this. Oh, I keep probably a few minutes, so is that okay? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you to the moderator and Rules Committee for providing time on the agenda to update the RTM on the activities of the Park and Rec Commission, specifically our town beaches. The mission of the Darien Parks and Recreation is to nurture active and passive recreational activities within existing town parklands, to maintain clean and attractive facilities, and to adjust and expand both the recreational programs and parklands to meet the recreational requirements of all in a cost-effective manner. In February 2017, the Commission embarked on a project to update the town's park master plan. Completed in January 2018, the planning process, under the guidance of professional parks consulting firms Weston &amp; Sampson and Green Play, included these elements: community engagement, facilities' inventory, level of service analysis, needs assessment, and operational and marketing analysis. As noted in the plan, the role of public parks and recreation as a health promotion and prevention agency has come of age. What matters is refocusing and balancing its efforts to ensure the health, well-being, and economic prosperity of communities and citizens in all demographic sectors. The gathered information was used to develop goals, objectives, and action plans. Surveys utilized during the master planning process were administered and collated by independent and experienced professionals, assuring the integrity of the results. As noted in the plan, key areas for improvement included not enough walking paths and that, quote, "Pear Tree Point Beach needs updating." The proposed project at Weed Beach will address the walking paths. So let's talk about Pear Tree Point Beach. Pear Tree is a simple park. There's the beach and picnic area, a building with bathrooms, concession stand, lifeguard, and first aid station, and storage currently used by the police, the parking lot, and a boat ramp. That is what is there now, and that is what is proposed to stay. No playground, no tennis courts, no volleyball nets, and early concept of a fishing pier was eliminated. So what is being proposed is to improve on the existing elements, which is therefore consistent with the findings of the plan. We are limited by the fact that the entire parcel is a VE zone, also known as a coastal high-hazard area, subject to high-velocity water, including waves. It is facing south and exposed to the very unprotected Darien harbor. As a result, FEMA strictly limits the amount of funds that can be spent to improve the building without raising it above the base flood elevation. The current building at Pear Tree Point is not built to today's flood standards. As designed, the proposed building will be stronger and have reinforcements that were not required when the old building was built. Simply put, it is a long-term investment in a more resilient structure. It will be compliant with FEMA regulations and ADA. The Commission believes it is prudent and fiscally responsible in using town funds to invest in a building that is above the base flood elevation and built to today's standards for resiliency to storm events and the prospect of rising sea level, which, based on information from the scientific community, is a when, not an if. At the same time, to support the entire community, the Commission believes that providing a structure that is accessible to individuals of all abilities to enjoy the beautiful view and tranquil nature of the water in a protected setting, out of the sun or other elements, is consistent with its mission. Contrary to one of the adjectives being used, the building is not massive, especially when compared to homes in the immediate area, which have as much as four times the square footage, and is in fact smaller than many homes in Darien. In a few minutes, Mike Scro will share historical pictures of previous structures on the site, which appear to be much larger and more reminiscent of the New England style than the current structure. We have also heard concern about the facility being used as rental space. To clarify, the room was never intended to be rented to non-residents, consistent with our practice at Weed Beach, but to provide added access to the waterfront to those who don't belong to private clubs. However, based on this being a hot button regarding the project, the Commission could consider a moratorium on any rentals for, say, two years, allowing for assessment of how the improved park is used, and I've had a conversation in this regard with Mike, Jamie Stevenson, and Pam Gary. Our town beaches are for everyone to enjoy. We can all agree that there is magic in being on and over the water. As a community, is my personal hope that we can be welcoming to all. The Commission is committed to providing the best parks experience possible to all residents, whether they are third-generation Darien family like mine or who moved to town two months ago. town two months ago, whether they live in a lovely home near the water, or a small new apartment on Heights Road. Before turning over to Mike, I'd ask Jamie Stevenson or John Zagratzky if they have any comments. You're good right now? Okay, then we will turn it over to Mike.
That's great, thanks. It'll still click. Yeah, great. Thank you very much. So, thank you all very much. It's actually a privilege and an honor to update the RTM this evening on what we've been up to with the Pear Tree Beach Building Committee. Just a quick thing, like David, my hair was not always gray. But unlike David, that just goes back a year ago when I started this whole process. So it has been fascinating. So what I'll do this evening is attempt to just give you guys a quick update. The process is still unfolding, you know, our anticipation is that the building committee will go on for a while. But, you know, we've accomplished a lot in the last 12 months. So with that, just quickly then, and I'll just try to keep from turning around too much here. So, the building committee was established, you know, roughly a year ago, and just in preceding that, the selectmen went out and essentially looked to recruit members for the building committee coming out of, as Lori mentioned, the master plan work that had taken place in Parks and Recs Commission, and kind of following on the model that took place for the DPW Garage Building Committee. So, you know, that was seen as a successful exercise, you know, with the DPW Garage, of course, being built successfully. And so with that as a model, and recognizing that this was a little bit bigger than a breadbox, the objective was to establish a building committee. And so, as I mentioned, roughly early summer, late spring, early summer, you know, the call went out and notification went out, looking for members for the building committee, volunteers for the building committee. I learned about it at that point in time. And by the way, I'm also on the Parks and Recs Commission. And so with that, a set of members were formed roughly midsummer, and those members included the following, so, and you'll see, I think it's a quite, and I think it's turned out to be a good, diverse group of folks, not all sharing the same opinions on how we've been proceeding here, but Martha Banks, and Martha's on the RTM, Tom Bell, Tom, and these are longtime residents of town. Tom Bell is the Darien Harbor Master as well, and a member of the Darien Boat Club. Diana McGuire, Diana is representing the Board of Finance on the building committee. Cheryl Russell, a member of the RTM Parks and Recs Committee. Myself, of course, Randy Tankus. Randy is, once again, a long-term resident of town and the prior Commodore of the Nuroten Yacht Club, and in fact comes with just a tremendous amount of experience. Randy was kind of over sore as the Commodore, the rebuilding of the Nuroten Yacht Club following Hurricane Sandy. Mark Thorne is the Select, Board of Selectmen representative on the committee as well. And Adele Coniff, who's a member of, she's, as you guys know, Adele is the Chair of the Parks and Recs Committee of the RTM, and also an alternate on our committee. And then a series of official members that include Jamie, the Town Finance Director, and Kate as well. So as I mentioned, we were formed roughly in kind of, you know, midsummer, but our first meeting did not take place until October 24th, so we're just coming up on our one-year anniversary. And at that first meeting, officers of the committee were elected, so Randy and I were asked to be, serve as co-chairs, and Tom Bell was selected as the Secretary of the Committee. And at that meeting, we also kind of identified and just kind of established a cadence for our meetings of meeting roughly twice a month, or, you know, every other week. And by and large, we've pretty much met every other week over the course of the last year. In some course, in some cases a little less, in some cases a little more, but averaging pretty much twice a month. So, you know, with that, and this was also spelled out in our charge, really the first objective that we had called out for ourselves was to draft an RFP for the selection of a design architect firm, or a team of consultants that would help us identify, really ultimately kind of help us sort through what we were attempting to achieve with the space, and then kind of work us through establishing a set of schematics and ultimately a set of solutions around what our objectives were. So this is kind of a little bit of the form follows function model. So, and I guess an early draft of the RFP had been initially prepared by the Parks and Recs, folks within the Parks and Recs Department, and we then dove into that once the committee was formed and finished that up, with the RFP being circulated publicly roughly end of November of last year, 2018. And that RFP, once again, was for Design Services, and with the objective of selecting a design team sometime in the early part of 2019, we got roughly, I would say, seven or eight credible responses to the RFP, and went through a process of whittling those down to about three, met with the top three candidates in the beginning of January or kind of early January, and ultimately made a selection of Neil Howke, the team of Neil Howke and Weston and Sampson. That selection took place roughly kind of early March timeframe. And through the course of that, there was a little bit of refinement, but ultimately through the course of our interaction with Neil and his team, we identified five phases for the project. So the first being programming and schematic design, so in other words, what were we attempting to achieve, and, you know, what would a solution look like around those objectives? Once we kind of nailed that down, then we would move into a design development phase, so really kind of putting more meat on the bones. Following that, we'd move into construction documents and then bidding. And then the interesting element that Neil kind of rolled into, his proposal to us, was to support us through the construction phase. That wasn't in our original RFP that we went to market with, but Neil essentially kind of extended his proposal to us to include that. All of what Neil is doing for us, in fact, all of what the team of Neil Howke Architects and Weston and Sampson is doing for us, is being done under a fixed-price contract for $144,000. And I stress that because I know there's been some question about, you know, the cost of the architectural services that are being provided, and the hourly rate and that type of thing. What I would also say, just quickly here, is I've been working, and many of us have been working quite closely with that team now over the course of the last year, well, since April, I would say. And honestly, I couldn't be more pleased in terms of their accessibility and their creativity and the collaboration process and working along with them. So at this point, in terms of the, am I going in the wrong direction here? Okay. So at this point, we have gotten to a stage where we've identified a series of what I would call proposed key elements for the project, and those include the following. And once again, this is proposed, this is where we currently stand. No pun intended, but none of this is cast in concrete at this stage. But the first is to renovate the existing bathhouse. So Lori touched on FEMA and the FEMA requirements, I'll talk a bit about that in a moment. But essentially, given the fact that this is in a zone that FEMA identifies as a VE15 zone, they have very strict requirements around how much money can be spent renovating existing buildings in a VE zone, VE15 zone. Their real objective is they don't want folks going out spending tons of money, having the federal government insure that work, and then ultimately having it potentially damaged in some catastrophic, you know, hurricane, and then folks going back to the federal government, you know, kind of asking for money to rebuild that. So they're very cautious in terms of what they allow to be done within that zone. So in any case, we had made the determination to renovate the existing bathhouse. Once again, I'll get into it a bit more in terms of how much money is available to us for that renovation. The next component of this is to replace the existing concession facility and the storage structure that's below the, that would be below that space. Expand the west beach. This was not in the original objectives that was set by Parks and Recs Commission, but as we were working through this, it just seemed like it would be, you know, fortuitous for us to take advantage of the opportunity potentially to expand the size of the beaches. So on the west beach, we all know that's a fairly narrow beach, it's shallow beach, I would say, in terms of the depth, the width of it. So the, at least at this stage, the proposal is to expand the size of that by essentially the width of a, the depth of a parking spot. So that's roughly 18 feet. So we would be adding 18 feet of additional beach onto the west beach, the back beach, and then on the south beach, adding about five feet. And once again, that does seem like one of those once-in-a-lifetime opportunities that very few, you know, towns get to increase the size of their beach. The next element of this, of course, critically important, is renovating the parking lot. So, you know, we've got a lot more work to do to understand really ultimately what's happening in terms of the pitch and the drainage, you know, around the parking lot. But certainly the objective would be to, as we work through this, identify ways in which we can potentially limit the amount of water that's sitting on that parking lot, certainly following storm conditions, and then kind of identify ways in which we can facilitate the runoff, the more rapid runoff of water following a storm. We've, I'm suspecting that we've all heard the stories about the flooding that takes place on sunny days at that beach, on the west side of the beach. We have identified that there is a storm drain that's adjacent to the west beach, and once again, having done some work with DPW and others, we've identified that that storm drain is lacking what's called a check valve. And the function of the check valve is to prevent water from backing up into that storm drain, into the sewage, and then, well, the storm drain, and up into the parking lot. I mean, the analogy that comes to my mind is it's essentially like a hole in the bottom of a hull of a boat. So, you know, when water is rising, you know, you'd like to think it's kind of rising potentially maybe around the sides or at the beach level. In this case, it's actually coming up to the, in essence, through the center of the parking lot. So nobody's making the claim that that's the only source of water in the parking lot, but it's certainly contributing to the water that's flowing into that parking lot. Both on sunny days, and many of us have been there on sunny days, where you can actually see the phenomena of water coming up through that drain and puddling in the parking lot, even though it hasn't breached the actual curb of the beach. So in any case, that's another element that we'll be working on, and we'll certainly look to expedite the correction of that in advance of anything else we're doing here as well. The next, of course, is the landscaping elements associated with what we're looking to do here, and that's still a work in progress, but ideally what we'd like to do is add additional trees for shade on the beaches. And I mentioned we're planning on expanding the size of the beach, and ideally what we'd like to do is plant some low vegetation, low meaning nothing that would ever, in any case, grow to the height that would block anybody's visibility, you know, out through the beach and out to the sand. But low and functionally to kind of knit that sand together and create a greater level of resiliency, to assure that the beach kind of remains in place. Another element is the possibility of including viewing decks in certain locations, and specifically the two locations that we're talking about, of course. One would be the elevator structure, and I'll show you a picture of that in a moment. But we're also contemplating the idea of adding some viewing decks around the existing gazebo. And the concept here is, and I learned a term that I wasn't entirely familiar with, but the concept here is just the attempt to activate some additional space in that beach. So, you know, identify ways in which folks can enjoy the beach without solely kind of enjoying it from being on the sand or being in the parking lot. And I'll show you some pictures of what that would look like. The next key element, of course, is to renovate the existing boat ramp, rebuild the existing boat ramp. Folks who are boaters, I'm not a boater, but folks who are boaters know better than I do, that there's an issue with the pitch of the boat ramp that makes it very difficult to both launch a boat, and maybe more importantly, get a boat out of the water under certain tide conditions. And then update the picnic area, and that's still a work in progress. And in part of that is to just create a bit more handicap accessibility in certain locations around the beach. I'm going to speed it up. Sorry about that. I won't necessarily read through all of these because time may not permit, but, you know, this will be, you know, this will be made available on our website. But this slide simply shows elements that we've responded to based upon feedback from folks. So as we've worked through this, it's a bit like watching a sausage being made. You know, it's a fully transparent process, so what you'd have is a bunch of folks sitting around a table deliberating over certain issues, some of which have come from the individual committee members, some of which have come from the consultants that we've worked with. And we've gotten feedback, and we've listened to the feedback, so, you know, you guys can take a look at this, but I would just say that there's a fair number of elements here that demonstrate that we have been responsive, that we have been listening. You can make your own judgment, but there they are. So in terms of current status, just very quickly to go through this, we're nearing completion of the first phase. So we're not at the last phase, we're simply nearing completion of the first phase. And that first phase is identifying a set of schematics based upon, you know, the ideal of what we'd like to see happening at that beach, what the community would like to see happening at that beach. And, you know, with that, we've prevented, we've presented a series of artifacts for the community to have a look at and understand. So we have our plans, those are posted up on the website. We now have a freestanding three-dimensional model that's sitting in Town Hall right outside here. By the way, that's the second model that Neil Howke and Associates have actually built for us, neither of which was actually contracted for in the original $144,000. So that's the architect going above and beyond what they originally contracted for to the town. We have a preliminary site plan that's been done by Weston and Sampson, and an initial construction estimate. I know there's been some question around maintenance fees, we'll get to that. You know, we haven't asked for money, we haven't gone to anybody to ask for money yet, so we're working through this, and sometimes the questions are coming at us a little ahead of our ability to respond to the questions, but, you know, I can't imagine us going to the Finance, Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen without having an answer to some of these questions, so we'll get there. But, you know, our initial estimate for the project is, as you can see here, for the buildings, as they currently are defined, 1.3 million. For the site work, about $900,000. We've built in a 15% project contingency at this point. We may be asked to increase the size of that or decrease the size of that, but that all totals a sum of 2.5, a little over $2.5 million for the entire project. Just quickly here, we've, this is simply summarizing the fact that we've spoken to a whole range of folks to better understand, in terms of doing our homework, what we can do within that particular type of coastal setting. So we've had a very, very high level of interaction with FEMA, we've had interaction with Connecticut Deep up in Hartford. A number of us went up to Hartford to meet with the Deep representative up there. In both of those cases, certainly in the case of Deep, we updated that representative on the entire project, and there was nothing identified by that individual, her name is Danielle Missel, that would suggest that there would be any showstoppers. We've had a whole range of conversations with FEMA since the outset of this, and we've most recently, as of last week, got a confirmation from FEMA that we are in full compliance with FEMA's requirements for building in a VE15 zone. And then you can just see here the level of interaction that's taken place with Jeremy and team and others. For me, this might be one of the most important, two of the most important slides here. So, you know, in doing my homework, because I'm relatively new to town, you know, I'm going on my second, coming up on my second anniversary, and it just seemed to me very kind of important to do a little bit, as much homework as I could, to get a better understanding of really what's been happening at this beach historically. So I went to the Darien Historical Society, spent an afternoon with the wonderful staff of the Darien Historical Society. I would recommend everyone to go there if you haven't, and spend as much time as you possibly can, looking through their files, and we unearthed these. So this is simply to show that this project is not something that's out of the norm. I mean, at least my takeaway from this is that this town has been engaged in building at Pear Tree Point Beach for over 100 years, one structure after another. You can see, some of these are quite fascinating. So let me just go back to here, I don't know how to use this little thing, the pointer here. Ah, so, sorry about that. This is actually, these are lockers along the south beach. So this is the precious south beach that we all drive up to and look out from our cars when we're having a sandwich. Those are lockers. You can see lockers here as well. You can see the earlier iteration of, you know, what is the gazebo at this point. This is a little tough to see. By the way, all of these photos are posted on the website. This is actually the west beach, and once again, this is very difficult to see under this lighting, but if you take a closer look at the actual picture of this, what you'll see is our forbears actually basically filled this in, these are all tires and landfill that they used as a way of just simply buttressing and supporting the, and keeping the beach in place. And so this is 19, starting from 1900. You can see earlier iterations, this is a photo that I actually bought on eBay, go figure. And if you take a closer look at this, it looks like it may be kind of mid-'40s-ish based upon the automobiles that are sitting there. But you can see the size of the building here, and I would imagine that building is probably similar to this building. And once again, you can make your own judgment in terms of the size of the building there, quite substantial, with all those lockers running in the back. This is the existing building, and this is what we're proposing. And what we're proposing is simply to essentially stay-- And what we're proposing is simply to essentially stay within the footprint of the existing building. This is actually looking from the harbor east, so this is the west side of the building. The idea here is to have a lovely space for folks to kind of, first of all, this is fully FEMA compliant now. So, what we're talking about is a building now that theoretically by FEMA standards should be able to withstand 100-year storm, a storm that theoretically should take place, you know, the 1% chance in, you know, each year of 100-year storm taking place here. This is, this provides for a very large, open community space for, you know, folks to simply, you know, get up and get out of the sun. You may have seen the reference in the FAQ that was put together by the town that people love the beach, but, you know, people are also concerned about sitting in the sun as much as we might have, you know, been familiar with growing up. So, this just provides a nice space to get out of the sun. These doors open up to provide great views as well as great breezes. There's a deck around that space, access via stairs and an elevator. Here's the existing gazebo. Nothing is being done with the existing gazebo. We're not touching it. We'll probably look to renovate the existing slab's concrete floor in it. But, you know, one concept is, as, you know, back to the notion of activating additional space, is to potentially put some, you know, viewing decks out along, and I was there today sitting out there, on those rocks, but ideally potentially put a viewing deck out over those rocks so that you can kind of access that, get up to it, and just kind of make this a much more accessible space and handicap accessible as well, so with ramps that'll allow folks to get up onto that space. So, that's where we are. I would just like to finish by saying, these are my grandchildren. I'm a member of the town. I'm a new member, but I also have my daughter who lives here. These are our two little grandchildren. That's my daughter who lives in Manhattan. She just had a little baby. I'd love to see her move up to Darien. And that's my grandson playing illegal frisbee at Petrie Point Beach. But, you know, we love the beach, and that is our beach. That's where we go on a regular basis. So, once again, thank you. I realize I ran over here, but thanks very much for the opportunity.
I want to thank everybody for these presentations. RTM asked that these be given, and everybody stepped up. It's really terrific. Item 1922 has been withdrawn. They want to do some more work on the numbers, and so they'll be back, but for tonight anyway, 1922 has been withdrawn. And what I'll do is move 1925 up because we have, our chief is with us here tonight, and we don't want to keep him here all night, so we'll take that item up next. So, for Public Health and Safety, I'm Mac Patrick.
Thank you. I'm Mac Patrick, Chairman of District 5 and Chairman of Public Health and Safety. I move Resolution 19-25, consideration in action and appropriation of a $450,000 state grant for a records management system for the Darien Police Department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Without objection, I will waive the reading of the resolution. On October 15th, with 12 of 15 members present, our committee met jointly with finance and budget to discuss the grant with Darien Police Chief Donald Anderson, Captain Bob Schraders, and Sergeant TJ Moore. Sergeant Moore discussed the opportunity for the department to assist in the development and testing of software that will provide an interface between the department's records management system and the state court's judicial system. In order to fund this opportunity, the town needs to accept the $450,000 grant from the state of Connecticut. It was noted that in a perfect world, the state could directly pay the vendor, and we, the RTM, would not have to approve the grant, but that is not the case. Chief Anderson noted that by using this software, hours of redundancy can be avoided as the current system is incredibly inefficient and a poor use of office of time in manually delivering documents to various courthouses. The system will be implemented statewide and is in Darien's interest to be involved in the initial rollout of the software. In other words, Darien will be leading, not following. The Public Health and Safety Committee voted unanimously to approve the resolution, and we ask that the full RTM do the same. Thank you.
For the Finance and Budget Committee, Jack Davis.
Jack Davis, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I'll try not to repeat as much as possible so we can move this along. One of the advantages of having us being selected as the test site is we end up using our forms, and we believe our forms are better than others. That ultimately saves training when we have to go, and if somebody else had been there, we'd have to relearn on their forms as opposed to using ours. In the past, multiple copies had to be made to, as an example, seven different departments for restaurant statements and that, and we could produce 1,000 pages. This will be eliminated because we're sending one document, and then it gets distributed to what needs to be. The process from accounting is basically, once milestones are met by both the town and the state, the state pays us money, goes into a grant account, we then pay the vendor. There is potential additional savings down the road because officers will not have to travel to the courthouse to deliver documents. However, as it was noted during the meeting, trips will still be required because this project does not send prisoners electronically to the courthouses. The committee with 12 of 15 members present voted unanimously for this grant and recommends the same to the full RTM.
Other committees? Anything? Town officials? Members of the RTM? Lecturers of the town? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor? Please rise. You don't see any? Okay. The next item we're going to do is 1923, and we'll vote on 23 and 24 separately, but the committees are going to report just one time on these two items. So, for Public Health and Safety, I'm Mac Patrick.
Okay. Once again, I'm Mac Patrick, Chairman of District 5 and Public Health and Safety. I move Resolutions 19-23, amending Section 5-8 of the Darien Code, and I move Resolution 19-24, amending Appendix D, Table of Ordinance Fines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Without objection, I will waive the reading of the resolutions. Thought I'd just give a little background of false alarms in town. Public Health and Safety, some time ago, at the request of the volunteer fire departments, worked with TG SNA to craft an ordinance to deal with the increased instances of false alarms in town. Later, the police department requested to be included in as false burglar alarm calls were increasing as well. A blanket false alarm ordinance was drafted and approved by the RTM, which included a $100 fine per occurrence. Fast forward to today, the number of false alarms across town have grown to the point that the fire marshal, the chief of police, and our town administrator are in agreement that the $100 fine is not enough as a deterrent to change behavior and make homeowners and business owners more responsible and sensitive to the inconvenience of our volunteer firemen and the distraction of our police officers. These resolutions amend the ordinance to reflect a graded fine schedule of $100, $150, and $250 for each occurrence within 365 days of the first offense. Per town council, $250 is the highest fine that can be imposed under state statute. Jack Davis, Chairman of Finance and Budget, will go over the increased numbers, but know that 55% of fire alarms are false, and some residences and businesses have had false alarms up to eight times per year. Our committee met jointly with F&amp;B in September and last week, and finally, we voted tonight with 15 of 15 members present, we voted unanimously to approve these resolutions, and we ask that the full RTM do the same.
For Finance and Budget, Jack Davis.
Jack Davis, Chairman of the Finance and Budget Committee. First, I would like to thank Mac and PHS because we've had several joint meetings throughout the year, and in fact, we've had about four of them to cover this and the one prior. And it really works well for our administrators and those who present to us. At our first meeting, our town administrator, Kate Bush, was there. We got a lot of information from Bob Bush, our fire marshal, dealing with some of the statistics. So, I'm just going to give some big ones because I know it's already late. But in fiscal year 16, the number of bills sent were 181. In fiscal year 19, the number of bills sent was 309. The billable false alarms from that same period went from 186 to 326. But the number of customers billed only went from 140 to 228. Approximately 6% of all customers that have alarms were ever billed for a false alarm. The issue is, is that when we start to look at it, and I'm just going to run through the numbers so you have some magnitude, the number of repeat false alarms twice was 28 properties for 56 alarms. Three false alarms were 11 properties for 33. Four had three. Five had three. I figure you guys can do the math. And there were four properties that had eight false alarms. Gener, gener, I'm sorry. There were four properties that had eight, which was 32 alarms. Now, understand, and when we get to a business side, a property is the tax assessment unit. So, if we went to Goodwives, and there's several stores there, if three different stores had it, each one of them counts as the Goodwives Shopping Center. That's just how the system is set up. We initially were only dealing with the fire alarms, and lo and behold, when we went to change the ordinance, it was discovered there was only one ordinance, and it didn't break out police and fire. By the time we found it, it was unfair to get the same information from the police department. We did not have it, but I want to give them a little bit of leeway here since it was like three days since when we found the ordinance to, the fact that they now had to approve it as well. I want to remind this body, more importantly, that the fines do not go into the town coffice. They go into the police commission or the fire commission. And both of those commissions use it for buying additional equipment for training. The fire commission has done training with it, has bought some additional equipment associated with it. I'm not as familiar with the police commission, but there have been purchases made as that as well that benefit the officers, the volunteers, and actually, all of us residents. From our committee, we've, with 12 members present, we voted eight in favor, three against, and one abstention due to the fact that we didn't have full information from the police. Part of the discussion was whether or not the fines would fully, I'm giving a minority report as part of the majority. The minority report is, is that there was a question whether or not increasing the fines would truly discourage behavior. That is still up in the air. There was also a concern that if somebody had one alarm, that maybe if they had another one, they wouldn't report it because they didn't want to pay 150. We do believe some people just will consider this being part of the business. I will say that we had people who had both sides of paying for fines, either police or fire, and, you know, and they voted on both sides of the equation. I will tell you that I do think increasing fines does modify behavior. I had a fob for my alarm, and twice I hit the panic button. Once, I wasn't even at home, and they showed up at my home. The fob is no longer on my keychain. So, we did, though, vote, as I said, eight in favor, three against, and one abstention. I hope I gave full disclosure on the minority report, but the eight that voted for recommends this to the full RTM.
We also had TG SNA on this. I don't see Frank here tonight. You're going to, okay. Joe Mazzelli, on behalf of TG SNA.
I'm Joe Mazzelli, District 4, Vice Chairman of TG SNA. Tonight, we met with seven out of 12 members to discuss this resolution. We felt that the intent was good, but possibly the wording could maybe be changed a little bit, or at least looked at by public safety. But in the end, we voted seven in favor and zero against to recommend this resolution.
Did you have the same comments on 24 as well, 1924? Okay. Yeah, they had the same on 1924. Great. Any other committees? Okay. Town officials? Yes, Jamie, First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's another element to this that I want everyone to be aware of, what really prompted the Board of Selectmen to take up the issue of looking at these false alarm fines, particularly for the volunteer fire departments. Since I began my tenure as First Selectman, I have received innumerable complaints about the audible fire horns, particularly in the areas in the downtown corridor where we have great density of residential homes. It is negatively impacting the people that live there and the businesses, and most recently, folks have said to me that they feel discriminated against for living in the downtown corridor, not able to live on two or three or four acres of land, and they're constantly subject to the audible horns of the fire departments. Those audible horns play a very important role in communicating to our volunteers. We are so proud to have three exceptional volunteer fire departments, and they are part of the fabric of our community. However, you heard the statistics about how many of those fire alarms are false, and with those false fire alarms come three blasts of the horn, sometimes repeatedly. And so, we felt it was important to do our part from the Board of Selectmen's perspective to increase the false alarm fines as a disincentive to people so hopefully they can get their alarms in good working order, so we can try and reduce at least the numbers of false alarms, eliminating excessive noise from the audible horns that's ruining the quality of living for people in certain areas of town. So, I thought it was important for you to know that. I have been very proud of working with the volunteers who have been very thoughtful. We've taken months to come together, and I think you'll be hearing We've taken months to come together, and I think you'll be hearing soon about some additional changes that they're willing to make on a voluntary basis, to try and make changes that will improve the quality of living for people who are most affected. So, thank you very much. I just wanted to give you that additional color.
Members of the RTM? Yes. Jim. Jim Cameron.
Jim Cameron, District 4. Could somebody talk about what the collection rate is on the existing fines, and what happens to people if the fines are not paid?
Again, not, Jack Davis. Again, I can't speak on the police side, because I don't have the statistics, but the collection rate on the fire side is in the high 90s. There was a little drop this year in the collection rate for, yeah, I'm looking for the statistics, because we actually had it from Bob. Oh, thank you. You will pardon me, I need to put my glasses on. I don't have them. They're back there someplace. Our collection rate over the last couple of years have been 99.47, 99.42, 96.55, and we were down this year. The quarterly report says 73, but it was higher when we got the information from Bob. But it is still not where we want, and we're assuming some of it is just from the repeat offenders. I, I, sorry. I, I can't see what the collection rate is, but it's here. The fact is, is that both the police department and the fire department, I had this conversation with them earlier, do work on this and make sure that they do follow-ups. I cannot give you an answer on what happens if somebody refuses to pay. That, I don't know, and I would probably refer to Kate on that one. And Kate, if you want to read it, that would be fine.
Kate Bush, our administrator, will fill in the blanks.
In, going back to 2018, the police billed out 82,000, and all but about 3,000 was collected. Through this year so far, we've billed out almost 46,000, and there is still 11,000 outstanding. But generally speaking, it looks like they're collecting, you know, 98, 99% on an annual basis. What happens to those who don't pay? We do send them to collection after a certain point, but some people are, they're just never going to pay. But I don't think it's, it's not about how much, it's not about the money. It's about trying to use the fines as a deterrent.
I, I, while we're talking about that, I think it's also important to note that both the fire and the police alarms do have an appeal process. So if you feel that you are unjustly charged, you can go to seek an appeal. So it's not as if it's done deal.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, team. We may have set a record here tonight of people coming forward to testify. All right. Members of the RTM? Electors? Okay, ready to vote? 1923, all in favor? The results of the vote on 19-25, 81 in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. That call knows? Abstentions? Okay. Now we'll deal with 1924. It's already on the table. So are there any additional committees that would like to report on it? Town officials? Members of the RTM? Town electors? Okay, so now, we will vote on 19-24. Wait till all the district chairs get back. Okay, on 1924, all in favor, please rise. Next item we'll deal with is 19-26, Consideration Action on Amending the June 12, 2017 Approved Resolution of 250,000, et cetera. On behalf of Public Works, Monica McNally, Late of the Plastic Bags.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Monica McNally, District 2, Chairman of Public Works. I move Resolution 1926, Consideration and Action on Amending the June 12, 2017 Approved Resolution for $250,000 for the purchase and installation of a generator at Town Hall to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by $75,000 to $325,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Without objection, I will waive the, waive the reading of the resolution. It was recognized by the RTM in 2017 that the current 50-kilowatt generator, installed in 1975 and rebuilt in 1998, should be replaced with one capable of powering both Town Hall and the Mather Center during an outage. The proposed generator is a 350-kilowatt diesel generator with a 2,650-gallon fuel tank. At 100% output, this generator will fuel both the Mather Center and Town Hall for three days, or more likely, Town Hall for four to six days on one fuel tank. Should there be a problem getting additional fuel delivery, the Department of Public Works has a carrier and can get more fuel from the DPW garage. The sound enclosure on the generator has acoustic insulation, which addresses noise concerns, and the unit meets all EPA requirements. A natural gas generator, which was also looked into, would cost approximately $75,000 to $80,000 more, and the piping for the natural gas generator would run about $20,000. That would bring the cost of this generator project closer to $425,000. The Town Hall is also getting an upgrade on the transformers. We have currently four transformers, three in the building and one outdoors. Eversource, at their cost, is removing all four and putting one outdoors. This will provide a safer and more efficient unit for Eversource to service, and it will also free up a room where the units are stored. The generator, fuel tank, and transformers will all be located on the south side of Town Hall, near the intersection of Renshaw Road and Park Place. The $75,000 extra appropriation requested tonight will be used for additional work. This additional work includes closing in and retrofitting the room the transformers, those three I mentioned, are in, and prepping it for meters, transfer stitches, switches, step-up transformer, et cetera, DPW equipment. The diesel fuel storage tank will be below grade, but not underground. It and the new transformer from Eversource will be screened with privacy slats and arborite. There is a connection to a dry fire hydrant, which will also be replaced at this time. Should the RTM approve this proposal tonight, digging will begin promptly. It will take 10 to 12 weeks to prepare the site for the generator, and the generator itself should be installed in January, or April at the latest, if there's a weather problem. The Public Works Committee met on October 15 of 2019, with seven of 13 members present, constituting a quorum, and we voted unanimously in favor of this resolution, and we asked the RTM to do the same.
Thank you, Monica. And for the Finance and Budget Committee, Jack Davis.
Jack Davis, Finance and Budget Committee. I'm only going to say two things. The contingency on this project's 8%, so there is some wiggle room, and the estimated cost of the total bond with the $75,000 is approximately $21,000 a year over a 20-year period. F and B, with 12 of 15 members present, voted in favor of the appropriation and to increase both the appropriation and the bond to 325. The rest of our report was mentioned by Public Works, no reason to go over it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committees? Town officials? Members of the RTM? Electors of the town? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please rise. Results on 19-23, 78 in favor, three no, no abstentions. Results on 19-24, 76 in favor, five no, no abstentions. Knows? Abstentions? Have one abstention there? Okay, you guys, okay, got that worked out? What I'd like to do now is introduce item 19-27, which came to my attention after we had published the agenda, to explain the addition of 1927. Jack Davis, Finance and Budget.
I'm Jack Davis, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I move RTM Resolution 19-27, Consideration and Action on Resolution Appropriating $30 Million to Refund Certain of the Town's Outstanding Bonds and Authorizing the Issuance of Refunding Bonds or Amounts Available in Unassigned Fund Balance to Finance Such Appropriations. If there are no, do I have a second?
Second.
If there are no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. Now, once I'm done with that, I would like to propose an amendment to the resolution. This came in at 3:30. In Section 2, the amendment would now read, the line would now read, "In lieu of the issuance of all or portion of the refunding bonds authorized by this Section 2, the Board of Finance is authorized to transfer funds from the town's unassigned fund balance to the debt service principal account to finance all or a portion of the appropriation authorized by Section 1 hereof." Do I have a second? We need to vote on the amendment first.
Right.
And then, we'll get to the report.
Other committees?
No.
Well, right, it's, it's, so, does anybody have anything? Any comments on the amendment? I see now.
Basically...
Basically, in all of our resolutions, we always track where the funds are going to make the payment to retire or to refund. When the original resolution was written, we did not have that it was going from the general fund unassigned balance to a, an account specific. This tells what account specific those funds are going to.
Other comments? Okay. Going to vote on the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment, please rise. 19-27.
Amendment.
Amendment, A. Yeah. Did I call opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right. Here we go. Now we deal, we have to wait until, we have to wait and see if the amendment passed first.
I'm assuming, since nobody is stand-up and everybody stood up for the other, I'm going to keep on going to keep this meeting moving. This is a result of two things that happened. In September, at the Board of Finance meeting, it was recognized that the town had favorable budget resulting in additional money in our unassigned. Plus, if you recall, when we did some account cleanups, that this body approved on certain funds, that also moved funds from assigned to unassigned. So every year, the RTM approves the resolution to allow the Board of Finance to refund outstanding bonds through the issuance of refunding bonds. This year, that resolution was 19-8. The resolution did not authorize the use of general fund funds to retire debt. The resolution that we just amended allows the Board of Finance to refund debt via refinancing or authorizes the use of unassigned general fund funds to retire debt. Without getting into a long explanation between town funds that are assigned or unassigned, basically, as we were just talking about, the false alarms for the Fire Commission, that becomes an assigned fund balance. General funds that are just in our normal account, that isn't assigned to a specific purpose, is unassigned. The Board of Finance has established certain criteria for where their guidance should be for our unassigned fund balance, and we have higher than what the guidance allows, which allowed us to look at this. An opportunity exists to retire three bonds, two of them maturing in July 15, 2021, for 1.8 million and change in principal, and another for $365,000, which matures in 2022. $1.8 million and change in principal, and another for $365,000, which matures in 2022. At the end of fiscal year, as I just mentioned, the unassigned fund balance was higher than the guidelines, and therefore put us in a favorable position to retire these bonds. The total debt to be retired will be $2,175,000. This will save the town approximately $49,607 net in interest charges during the current year. Total interest is about $5,000, and there's, we have to do some legal work which absorbs the rest. But it will also reduce the amount that we have in our debt servicing budget by $1.8 million for fiscal year '21, and $360,000 in fiscal year '22, which corresponds to about 21 basis points just in next year's budget, because we're paying it now instead of paying it in July next year, and 26 basis points over the two years, including some of the The Board of Finance approved this resolution in October 15 meeting. We met on the same night, and with 15, 12 of 15 members present, voted unanimously to approve this resolution and recommend the same to the full RTM. There's one last thing that I feel very important and proud of on this resolution. We found out that the resolution was happening at the Board of Finance meeting on Tuesday. The committee had enough information to deal with it last Tuesday and move this forward. Often, the RTM is told that we don't react and we're too slow. I think approving this resolution shows that we are quite timely and we are quite fleet with things that are important to the town, and therefore, that's another reason to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for the editorial, Jack. It was a little frosty after the ink was barely dry on the Rules Committee's approved agenda. You just take it and shred it and start over. At any rate, any other committees want to try? Okay. Members of the RTM? Comments?
David Bain, District Five. I'd just like to be sure I understand the amendment that we just enacted or approved here. The amendment allows the Board of Finance to transfer up to $30 million from the unassigned fund balance to pay down and retire debt, and I believe Mr. Davis's report just said that the Board of Finance is looking at retiring maybe $2 million. So, why are we approving, without any further say-so by the RTM, the ability of the Board of Finance to use $30 million of our general fund balance to pay down debt when it doesn't seem to be necessary?
First, they would never pay down 30 million, we don't have 30 million in the bank. But second, it's based upon guidelines, and they could only use up to the guidelines of what they can on unassigned balances. The reason why this first resolution, and Kate's going to hate me for saying this, the reason why we started doing the, up to 30 million, is that a number of years ago, there was an opportunity to refinance certain bonds because there was a favorable interest rate, and we couldn't get it to the RTM on a timely basis, and we lost that opportunity. So, on an annual basis, what we do is we give a broad range, we have more than 30 million in debt, to go and say, you can refinance if the opportunity exists. That resolution never included the fact that we could use general fund unassigned, that's specific, very unassigned general fund, fund balances, should an opportunity exist on a callable bond. Has to be callable. So, there are certain guidelines here. The overall resolution, we're amending originally had 30 million. They're not using 30 million, we have to trust that our Board of Finance is staying within their guidelines and move this forward. They, just basically what it is. The 30 million still gives them the opportunity to refinance anything up to 30 million. This is just giving an alternative and following the accounting practice. So, on these 2.1 million, it's saying we're taking the money from unassigned general fund balance and moving it to the debt account. That's all it does, it gives some clarity, and I'm sure that there'll be a couple more tweaks when we see this again come next May.
So, as part of enabling resolutions that we pass in May, there was a hole, essentially, in, in what we'd been doing, and this closes that and allows the Board of Finance additional flexibility in calling debt. We allow them to borrow debt on emergency basis, but this gives them the chance to, to call it and save us some money. Okay. Where am I here? Yes, any other? Yes, Jim Cameron.
Jim Cameron, District Four. Mr. Zagrodzki is not here this evening from the Chairman of the Board of Finance, and what the Board of Finance approved was not this resolution as amended, so I'm wondering if Ms. Bush, as town administrator, would give us a thumbs up or express any comments she has about this as amended.
I was the one who wanted the amendment. Yeah, I was concerned that the resolution spoke about the source of the funds but not the, where the funds were going to. So this afternoon, Town Council Fox and I had a conference call with our Bond Council, Marie Fallon, to discuss the amendment, the possibility of the amendment, and so she actually wrote the amendment at my request.
Electors of the town? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please rise. Results on 19-27A, the amendment, 79 in favor, no no votes, and two abstentions. And results on 19-26, the generator, 79 in favor, one no, and one abstention. Okay. And please don't leave till we get the results. Oh, and I had a note from Clarice Artori, said, would you announce that on Wednesday, October 23, the Legal Women Voters will hold Candidates Night at the Town Hall here, beginning at 7:00 PM? RTM candidates will be introduced, candidates for major town offices, Board of Selectmen, Board of Ed, Board of Finance, P&amp;Z will discuss the issues on, and Channel 79 will record. Results on 19-27 as amended, 77 yes, one no, no abstentions. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Second, please? All those in favor, please rise.